Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, meeting of the Reno County Commission. Our first order of business today is to have the pledge of allegiance to the American flag. Would you join me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which is sacred.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome back Commissioner Bush with us today. He's missed a few weeks. Commissioner Bush, we're very glad that you're with us. And I understand you can be with us until sometime after 10:00. So we'll try to get as much of the meeting in as possible during the time that you can be with us.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I appreciate your patience and perseverance.
A couple of quick announcements by the chair this morning. I wanted to recognize a letter that the commissioners got this week from Betsy McKinney, Fairfield USD 310 Superintendent. As everyone knows, we worked a lot on the COVID relief funding and so forth. She said, "Mr. Sellers, I want to extend a personal thank you to you and each of the commissioners for your support and help with the CARES money that the county received. You were extremely generous, making sure that over half of the money went to schools. It has made such an impact here at Fairfield. We have almost everything we need now to keep our students as safe as possible. Honestly, that would not have been possible without you and the commission. There is no way we could have afforded the things without you and the commission." And been able to do and to provide without financial assistance. She goes on and lists some of the things that they've been doing. Sounds like a very thorough job of trying to keep their students safe. I believe all the commissioners received an email from her, and we want to thank her for that note. Second thing I wanted to bring up this morning is something that I think the Department of Aging and the county does that is extremely important. And I want to make everybody aware of this because it's coming up, October 15th through December 7th. And that's the open enrollment period for Medicare prescription drug plans. And Commissioner Hurst, you might help me here if you can. But the department agent looks at the prescriptions that anyone that's on Medicare has and can help them get the best prescription coverage at the lowest rate by reviewing that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Between the Department of Aging and the Reno County Extension, as well as some pharmacies. But those people really work hard at this.
And I understand, and I hope I'm saying this correctly. They already have sheets that can be picked up at the aging office at 120 West B. These sheets can be filled out with your prescriptions and brought back to them, and they will schedule an appointment. These appointments this year are going to be done via phone, I believe, instead of in person.
I think it was good for you to bring that up ahead of time.
And again, anyone that wants one of these forms to fill out, please go to the front office at 120 West B. I did this last year, and it's a process that I think helps anybody that's under Medicare within the county. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our COVID-19 update from interim Health Officer Karen Hammersmith and Emergency Management Director Adam Washire.
Good morning.
Good morning, Karen.
So prior week, positive test rate was 7.19% this morning. We have a seven-day average from 9/17 of 9.10. Community positive test rate is 7.32%. We've tested 8,291 cases. We have 949 positives, 7,342 negatives. We have 103 active cases, of which that 53 of those are associated with the Hutch Correctional Facility outbreak. We have three active clusters, three fatalities. We have a positive test rate overall of 11.45% and a population tested of 13.19%. And we have 813 recovered as of this time.
Is there a way, excuse me, go ahead. Is there a way to separate out and have basically two metrics? One that shows a community itself, and then another that shows just the Department of Corrections? It seems to me that with the color coding that the schools use, that that might be useful if, to make a difference. Just my early thought, just a question.
You want active cases brought out and community versus the all active cases? Is that what you're asking?
I think the data from, from the total data that you showed, the 11-something, and if you could show just the Department of Corrections and then the rest of the community, because the Department of Corrections is kind of an enclosed community itself.
Correct.
I don't know whether that makes sense to anybody or not, but to me, that would be useful, you know, and show what our actual rest of the county is doing versus just the... And you do separate it some, but your overall, just a thought.
I can, I can see if DJ is able to do that or not. He works on that.
Maybe you do it already. Okay, for that color coding, I don't know.
And Ron, what you're saying there, that the 7.32 that she says of total community testing, that includes the corrections group, and if that wasn't included, it would be lower? Is that what you're suggesting?
So there's a couple of different things. So the community positive test rate, that is where we are pulling those inmates out. And that, there's a, an explanation under that, what community testing is. And then the overall test, positive test rate is at 11.45%. But the cases have all the cases in there. And then we can pull that out.
I think it's just people need to understand that.
How many active cases we have going in our community.
Maybe that's more than you think. People just need to understand that.
The difference between 11 and 7?
Yes.
Okay. I think you already have what he's looking for, maybe. Do these numbers include the Saturday 254 tests?
No, not that. I believe they do not, because I do not have those back yet, and so they have not dumped into EpiTrax, which would be how we gather all that information.
I think those are back, so maybe you'll be receiving those soon.
They should be back as of today sometime.
I was called yesterday. I took a test Saturday, and they were already back yesterday before lunch.
Okay. And they do have to dump them into the EpiTrax system, so.
So with a good Saturday test, that 7.32 might be coming down somewhat.
It may. However, we have had more active cases. I do know that with our epidemiologist leaving, I have been working over the weekend. And so I do know that we've had more active cases in the school settings and just more spread there, so.
Any comments you want to make about the Bueller Grade Schools being homes this...
So, so we had cases in Bueller Grade School where we had several classes that would have needed quarantine because we had active cases in the school. So in talking with the superintendent, it was decided to go ahead and just close that grade school to in-person learning, just so that, you know, people that would not necessarily have had to quarantine not be skeptical that their child may have had issues as well. So it was just a joint decision, because we would have had like five classrooms completely quarantined, the grade school.
Okay, I was in a...
Karen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush, is this their policy, their protocol at Bueller Grade? Or through the Bueller system, or they gotta continue to do this until you get like three, four, five active cases? Do you know?
So, no, we don't have a policy for that. We were just looking at the quarantine and how many children would be out there. So it was a collaboration between the superintendent and myself. Our goal is to keep the kids in school. And so by quarantining several of the classrooms, we did not want it to spread, and we did not want to create panic. So they wanted to move and be proactive rather than have more cases in the school and people upset the other way.
But so then you're telling me that they're gonna do this on a case-by-case basis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, I'd like to inform you that yesterday at Rotary, Superintendent 308 made a presentation and was most thankful for the work that your office is giving them. I believe you meet on Fridays with an update countywide on what's going on. And he was very thankful for the cooperation within the community of your department and others to get them the latest information possible.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Bush? Bush, Bob, do you have anything else for Karen?
No, thank you.
Okay, Ron?
None.
Okay, we'll move on to Adam.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Washire, Emergency Management Director. Just clarify one thing for Commissioner Hurst. What is used for the school gating criteria already has the prison population removed from that.
Okay.
So that's, that's how that gating criteria is done. This is day 206 of COVID. We started all the way back on the 1st of March, 2020. And the Board of County Commissioners declared a public health emergency on March 19th of 2020. That was extended until December 31st. Currently, there's 102 counties with current disaster declarations. Butler, Chautauqua, and Bourbon County do not have active disaster declarations in place. And the state disaster declaration is set to expire on October 15th of 2020. So we'll be closely watching that and monitoring that situation to see what happens with the state's declaration there. The Kansas Health and Environment reports an instant total of 53,959 cases of positive COVID-19. That's up 1,674 since last week and four additional deaths since last week. So we're in excess of 600 deaths now. During Governor Kelly's press conference yesterday, she advised that Kansas passed the 500 mark last week in deaths, and now this week, we're past the 600 mark. And then she emphasized that cases and deaths in Kansas continue to rise because people have not implemented a coherent coordinated mass policy, and we've done a patchwork response through the state of Kansas. KDHE is currently tracking 191 active outbreaks, and that was active as of last Wednesday. They only update one day a week, and that will be updated tomorrow. So of those 191 active outbreaks, I'll hit on a few of these here. There's three in government, three in religious gatherings, 31 in colleges or university, that's up seven, and then two related to sports activities. For several months now, we've been using what's called a BATEL system. It's a decontamination system for N95 masks, and there's some agencies across Reno County that use that. Basically, what that system does is you send your mask in to be sanitized, and then that mask can be reused. The last day for that system will be September 25th, so you can ship them in on September 25th. They'll get cleaned one last time and come back. There's been some differing information that's come out, and we were told that FEMA sent out some information as well, saying that there's another site that's been verified. Reports out of the state are saying that that is inaccurate. There will not be a BATEL site any longer in the state of Kansas.
Why are they discontinuing that?
It was a FEMA contract, and I believe that FEMA contract is expiring. And it's, it's very expensive to keep that system in place. And it's been a couple of weeks since I looked at the information, but as of a couple of weeks ago, all the masks that had been sent into that system didn't even, wasn't even one entire cleaning. So it wasn't even, it hasn't been full the whole time it's been there. So it's really lack of use and cost.
But Adam, in there, I've been reading, isn't there a severe shortage nationwide of these 95 masks?
There is a shortage nationwide, and they are challenging to get. But I don't think the, it was used to the degree they thought it was going to be used when it, when it came into Kansas. So I think that's a big factor why it's going away. If there's any questions about that, anyone listening can get with my office, and I can refer them to the State Logistics Section, so they can, they can talk about that directly with the state. Quarantine guidelines have not been updated since we talked last week. Currently, if you attend a mass gathering of 500 people or more out of state where social distancing and mask use is not possible, you will have to quarantine when you get back into Kansas. And the KDHE is still pushing out information about potential air quality due to the Western wildfire smoke. Some of the health problems are related even to healthy individuals, burning eyes, running nose, coughing, and illness such as bronchitis. Individuals with respiratory issues, pre-existing heart or lung disease, or children or elderly may experience worse symptoms. So that could be in effect until the Western fires are over, so that could be quite some time. And then with the commission, I also wanted to share a personal story with you this morning. I think it's important to get in front of the community. We keep talking about, hey, get your kids tested, do what's best for the community when they become symptomatic. I have a son, he's three years old, and he has asthma, and he's been dealing with that for quite some time. Well, yesterday, he was exhibiting some of the symptoms he usually does with asthma. But they, we also exhibited him to COVID. So we took him into the doctor yesterday. We took him into Hutch Clinic and talked about his history and what's, what we're seeing in the community. And due to the fact that he goes to a public school in town, between the doctor and I, we decided it was best to get him tested. So three years old, he did, he did the nasal test. He did great with it, and it came back in less than one hour. They called us and said, "It's negative." So if that's a little peace of mind for our community, that, hey, if a three-year-old can do it, anyone can do it. And then we're having a very quick turnaround on people who are symptomatic that will allow the household members to return to work the next day if it's negative. So again, I'm just sharing a personal story to encourage people to get out there and get tested.
Good comment.
That's all I have for you this morning.
Commissioner Bush or Commissioner Hurst, do you have any questions of our Emergency Management Director?
I guess I've got one question. Are we seeing an increase in Reno County in the number of confirmed cases? Did I miss that?
I think, well, she's coming to the podium. We have 50 active cases that are not connected with the correctional facility, if I understood her comments this morning.
So, no, we have, we have, I'll have to get back to the right line. We have 133 active cases, of which 53 are connected to Hutch Correctional Facility.
I misunderstood that, excuse me.
Yeah. So we have 80 that are in our community. And I would not say that we are decreasing that at all.
Okay, so if we're not decreasing, pulling a line, are we...
Are you asking if we're just kind of staying steady?
Yes. I guess I'm asked from last month to this month, have we had an increase in the number of confirmed cases? Or are we holding steady? Or what's your stat?
We, we dropped down a little bit at the first part of September, but I would say we've had an uptick in cases in the last couple of days, like the last few days. We had quite a few, I want to say 10 cases over on Saturday, and probably 10 cases on, 10 cases on Friday, 10 cases on Saturday, I would say. And that, they haven't necessarily come into EpiTrax, but because we are having this 15-minute turnaround time, we've worked very close with the physicians, and that's how I know we have more cases. So I'm going more by what I have worked, not necessarily what we're all accounting for in EpiTrax.
Okay. And I guess, on a more personal note, I have a good friend who is an attorney who was found positive until when they went and double-checked his numbers. She was found to be not positive. How often are we seeing this type of situation? Do you have any answer to that, Karen?
So Dr. Scott Pauli just got here, and I will let him speak to that, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
Dr. Pauli, you're on the question-and-answer box here this morning. Did you understand Commissioner Bush's question?
I think I heard him. I can't, I can never speak to any specific case. I may or may not know about any case anybody mentions, but I'll just speak more vaguely. The tests we have are amazing. The technology is absolutely amazing. The advent of that started in 1985. Because of that test, we're at the position where we are with HIV now versus 35, 45 years ago, meaning we have this test, a diagnostic test, that puts us in a situation where we can make clinical decisions, whether they be therapeutic or in regards to a pandemic. A, the strength of these tests are that they're going to find it. It'd be like my nose compared to a hunting dog's nose. The hunting dog is going to smell a smell that is there that my, my nose may not be able to pick up just because of its lack of ability to do so. With SARS-CoV-2, with Zika, with MARS, with SAR, the original SARS, we're dealing with a, an infectious disease that it's, it will have a limitation as far as once it exits the system and somebody's no longer infectious. Because the test is so good, though, it can pick up on the viral remnants that are still in a system even after that person's no longer infectious. Some would see that as a weakness. No, it's a strength of the test. But you have to keep that in mind when you're interpreting these cases clinically. This is the practice of medicine, not the algorithm of medicine, where everything's black and white and we can just read it on Google. So this brings up the conversation about pre-test probability when you test somebody. Pre-test probability would be the likelihood that somebody does or does not have something. In our community, as the prevalence goes up, prevalence would be the measure in any given moment of the percentage of positives of a disease or disease state or virus. Your pre-test probability goes way up. So you have to use that to interpret. You also have to know the sensitivity and specificity of the test. These, this practice is called heuristics, H-E-U-R-I-S-T-I-C-S. It's something we all naturally do in our, in our given careers. But if you sit down and think about it, a lot of it can be done mathematically, but we just do it by the nature of what we, we know. Farmers do it, plumbers do it, everybody does it. In the case when we're doing community-type testing, we're looking at a different pre-test probability than a person who is actively sick. So we have to keep that clinically in mind. We also have to realize that when we do community testing, there's a different optic, the fourth or fifth or sixth time you've done it sequentially in a community versus the first time, because the first time, you're starting fresh. So there is the possibility that you catch somebody who's either pre-symptomatic, meaning, oh my goodness, they have the RNA in their body, they have yet to have the disease, but they're already infectious. The next scenario is, hey, there's somebody who's never going to become symptomatic. They're asymptomatic by definition, and they are infectious. Or, and/or there's the possibility that they are post-infectious and recovering. So in a case that we do a test on somebody that's positive, and in a case in the community I was trying to learn when we first had, did asymptomatic testing, and we repeat it, if we see they're negative on the second one, it could be explained by a few things. One, they are recovering. In the, in the three or four days prior, they had RNA in their system. On the three days later, when we test them, they have now cleared that virus. The other is they are recovered, and they're having intermittent shedding of that RNA, which is a known entity. The next is the possibility of a bad collection. A great test is as perfect as the person doing the collection. So there are human variables involved here. So you also have to look at, was the second sample not as well-collected? All of that, you have to look in with the eyes of interpreting the pre-test probability, the sensitivity and specificity. Some say, "Well, this is ridiculous. We shouldn't use this. This test isn't perfect." Welcome to medicine. When somebody comes in with chest pain, our test for heart attack is not perfect. We use the practice of heuristics to determine pre- and post-test probability, the likelihood of things. This is the same scenario, except we're dealing in a pandemic, not simply a single patient who needs a diagnosis. That brings up the epidemiology. The epidemiologist appropriately will say, "The test is positive." Epidemiologists follow the test. While I'm interested in digging into the weeds for each individual person, for the greater community, you're better off just assuming that's, that test is infectious. And I almost hate this analogy, but I'm a rural person. I grew up hunting and hunter safety. And I'll ask this to the council. What do you do with every firearm you ever look at and touch? You assume it's what?
Loaded.
Right?
Loaded.
This is no different. This is no different. So we can get down into the weeds on individual cases and patients, but we lose sight of our ultimate goal. This is different than any medicine I've practiced or my colleagues, where we're looking at diagnosing for the purpose of treating an individual and avoiding morbidity and mortality. This is a practice of decreasing the transmission of a pandemic within a population. The earth is round, the sky is up, the ground is down. The positive test rate is what we use to track. We use the best tests we have. We use our practice of heuristics where we can. Masks, social distancing, early identification, isolation, and quarantine all slow the transmission. This virus in a population that's non-immune, that has what I consider normal interactions between populations, we're not normal, by the way. We naturally have some social distancing because we're rather rural. This virus, based on our best knowledge in six months, which is the infancy of understanding this, one person would affect five people, infect five people. Those five would infect five. So that's 25 more, plus the original one, plus the second five. If you do things to slow the spread, you can cut that. This is called the R-value. We use the term "are not" when we're referring to a population that's not immune. Through those things we're talking about, we've already cut the transmission value in this country down to three, down to two and change, most likely, in this community. But anything above one is exponential spread of pandemic. Only when that gets to less than one is it a fire that's going to burn itself out. The flu is a little different. Its R-value by definition is quite high, but we have an immunization. It's not perfect on the individual level. But when you combine it in a herd, to use the ranching idea of this, if you can prevent each one of the cows in that herd by 10, 20, 30%, it's less likely to enter the herd. And when it does enter the herd, it spreads a lot more slowly. So it's not going to go from one side of the herd infecting all of them rapidly. The measures we have now, including this rapid testing, are all kind of feathers in our cap that help us decrease that R-value. None of them are perfect. But together, they're like layers on a sandwich. You get improvement each additional layer you add. Immunity, whether it's something that we get infected with and develop or through an immunization, doesn't have to be perfect, but it helps slow that. I say that because it kind of wraps all the way back to that original test, which was, you know, most likely in the community asymptomatic testing. Finding those cases early prevents that 1 to 5, 5 to 25, 25 times 5, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So if you can catch that case early, you've prevented that many more families, grandparents, schoolchildren being infected. You do run the risk of that one person having to isolate for 10 days. That becomes a left-hand, a right-hand weigh which one is more important.
Dr. Pauli, did you, I noticed that you had, I think, 254 tests on Saturday.
Yes.
Did you have more people that wanted it, or was that pretty much the everybody that came out?
That was pretty much everybody that came out.
Good. Do you have the numbers back from that of positive cases?
I believe we had five positives. I believe it's five.
Karen said that she hadn't got the numbers yet, so...
I should be receiving a text message here soon.
Okay. And that's about the same number that I recall that you had the first week of testing?
Yes.
And I never heard on the second, was it about the same?
I think it was about the same. Actually, we have, we tested on...
Does that say anything that we're having five each week, five out of 250?
It tells me...
That should be an ongoing percentage of community...
It tells me a couple of things. It tells me that we're having probably 1% to 2% of the walking-around population does have the RNA in their body. Again, I gave you the kind of three to four scenarios that that could represent. The literature out there, again, in its infancy, is really saying, yeah, we're surprised, but asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic people are really the spread of this. So that's what we're seeing some. But on the flip side, we're seeing more symptomatic people. So our numbers are going up overall. We're seeing a kind of a consistent 1% to 2% of the asymptomatic, but three, three data points, three... But three data points, three community testing in a row, isn't quite enough for us to make too many, many assumptions. But it's there. It's telling me it's there.
Okay. Next question. We have one more week, I believe. Somebody helped me of clinic testing on what was approved.
That's correct.
Okay. Do, I'm not trying to put Karen or anybody on the spot, but do we have a plan for after that week of what our desires are going to be? Are we going to discontinue this? What's the situation?
So we are working on a plan within the Health Department, and we were going to present that next week. Trying to figure out how to use the money to the most appropriate availability that we can.
Okay. I guess, Dr. Polly, you want to say something in regard to that?
I think it's important for our community to keep doing it, and we're actually seeing others kind of catch up. This is ongoing other places. How we do it, I don't mind. I don't really care, but as long as we have it available in our community. I wish it was something that was just paid for, for everyone. So we're working with the Health Department to still kind of go through those hoops and hurdles to kind of figure out before people get tested how it's paid for, because the last thing we want is for people doing the right thing for their community and their asymptomatic to get a bill from anybody.
Sure.
So we're kind of still walking through that. The legalese of that seems clear on the surface, but then when you get into how it's interpreted for the insured, which there's multiple types of insured, and then the uninsured, it comes a little bit tricky. So we've been wading those waters. We waited them before, and that was really why we came to the Health Department and council beforehand. We said, we can't find a way to do this, but we know that it needs to be done. And sure enough, as you've seen from the CDC and what all other major areas are doing, they're saying, hey, asymptomatic testing is the way to go. I'll add to that that we're fighting an uphill battle. I wish we could have started asymptomatic testing in May, June, July during the summer reprieve, because when schools started, we knew it would get worse. You know, you can't throw dry logs on a fire and expect for the fire not to grow. So even if we see percentages stay the same or grow a little bit, we have to keep in mind that we have our foot on the brake, but this train is trying to roll downhill. I kind of reversed my analogy metaphor there, but we're kind of fighting, fighting gravity a little bit. So again, the community testing is, if we lose that, I think we're, we're missing a big piece that'll help us keep that transmission rate lower. It's one of the few things that we have to keep our foot on the neck of this.
Okay. Any questions of Karen or Adam or Dr. Polly this morning?
I would just like to make one comment to Dr. Polly. I'd just like to say that I appreciate the time that you give up. Tuesday morning. It is so beneficial to have a medical professional in the room to guide us. So, a personal thank.
Well, I think we all agree, and we all want to thank Dr. Polly. And certainly, I was tested this Saturday. The clinic has got a method out there and three weeks of getting you through quickly and very organized. And I was very pleased with everything, except when Dr. Polly stuck that thing down my throat, I felt. But I guess it's better than sticking it up my nose, is that correct?
It's much, it's much more tolerable.
Yeah. So Ron, just to you, Ron, I've had seven of those tests.
Well.
And all of them have been up the nose, let me tell you. It is not pleasant.
Well, we know you're a lot tougher, Bob, than I am.
As we move forward with the thoughts on community testing, I'd also like to throw out there, I think everybody involved is interested in finding the most efficient, feasible, cost-effective way to do it. And I can tell you that those of us on the healthcare side are just as supportive of that as anybody. We would love it if the county and communities can do it on their own. If due to supply issues, staff, personnel, expertise issues, they're unable to, we're happy to help however we can. We'd also like to say, I don't think it'd be appropriate for the county and communities to do it, just to do it, if it costs more. I think we should, I think that's an important part of this. The CARES Act money, although it's a large sum, I mean, we all know how quickly any of that can be burnt through. So if we, if we can always keep tabs on how much it's costing and keep that reined in, I think that's an important thing that we can accomplish while at the same time getting our community testing rates where they need to be.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks to all three of you for being here today. Okay, well, go ahead.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
That week, it's on the September, what, ninth meeting? I'm wondering if this is an opportunity for us to do some summary reporting on the Weber Act quarterly with this? Because I continue to get questions as to where we at, where do we come from, and what's going. And I'm wondering if that, something that specifically the Health Department can put together, rest it, but I don't, but I don't know what to call it.
What specifically are you asking for that they haven't provided?
I would ask for a quarterly summary and a month-by-month summary as to number of cases tested, cases positive, and basically kind of roadmap that to where we got to how we got here.
Okay, so you're looking at some history?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also potentially, what does the future hold by looking at the history?
Well, I'm not sure Dr. Polly's going to make a statement, but I'm not sure that any of us can predict the future.
I don't think any of us here can, but we, I won't throw his name out, because I don't know if he wants us to, but we do have somebody who, this is their job and what they do for Karen and I and the Health Department on a daily basis. So amongst the many other things he does, I imagine we can ask him to put together some sort of summary. And within that, in layperson's terms, so that I and everybody else here can understand, he could probably lay out those indices that he's seeing that either are favorable or unfavorable in regards to what they may, what they likely predict in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Bob, we will hope to have some data for you to be able to look at. We can have that data before the meeting. We can get it to Bob so that he can be looking at it before the meeting, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to a public comment. Is there any public comment from anybody in the audience today on items that are not on the agenda? Is there anyone outside waiting? I know a fire department gentleman is, but is there anybody for public comment outside waiting?
There's nobody out.
Okay, thank you. If not, we'll determine additions or revisions to the agenda. Commissioner Hurst, do you have any additions?
I do not.
Commissioner Bush, any additions to the agenda?
No, sir, not today.
Okay. County Administrator, I think you have an addition to the agenda, please?
Yes, to add to the consent agenda for accounts payable, the CARES Act money for the Sparks Funds, eighty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-eight dollars and sixty-four cents to be approved. This includes six thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, twenty-six cents to Reno County Education Cooperative, and then for direct aid, and then some reimbursements also to Reno County Education Cooperative, and then seventy-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars to Hutchinson Community College. These were not included in the last weeks. They need some additional documentation. So this will kind of take place, just FYI, every week as Leslie processes the reimbursements and direct aid. It's not completed in time to go out in the original agenda packet, so I usually get it Monday evening to add to the agendas.
Okay. And Randy, do you know if this seventy-seven, three, thirty-one, thirty-eight, is that, is that for the first part of the expenses, or is that now?
That's the reimbursements, yes.
Okay, so we're still paying for some of the reimbursements?
Yes.
Okay.
The sixty-four hundred for Reno County Education Cooperative, that's part of the direct aid.
That's.
The rest of it's the reimbursements.
Okay, okay. Okay, we'll add that to the consent agenda under vouchers. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is vouchers for an amount of one million, forty-five thousand, ninety-three dollars and ninety-two cents. In addition, we'll have the eighty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-eight, sixty-four, which is the CARES Act relief funding. Change orders, five-thirty through five-thirty-two. We have the minutes of the August 2020 meeting. We have the purchase of two 2021 Ram Tradesman 2500 crew cabs, four-by-four trucks for the solid waste department. And that is being, a bid received from Allen Samuels for a total cost of fifty-four thousand, thirty-six dollars, which includes two trade-ins of two 2009 Chevrolet four-by-four trucks. And the final item there is a quick claim deed from Reno County, Kansas, to the public for road right-of-way purchases pertaining to the partial vacation of Mohawk Road for the solid waste expansion project. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll move.
I'll vote.
There's a motion by Commissioner Bush. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of any of these items by the commission?
I would just like to say that we have a pretty good rundown on those pickups and why their life expectancy has been exceeded. So just wanted to make that comment regarding the hours and the use of them.
Okay. Any other comments? Not, please call the roll.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to business items, a request to purchase a used fire engine at the cost of not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars by Kent Branscombe, Chief of Fire District Number Four, and I believe he's here. Yes, Kent, will you please tell us about your request for the hundred thousand dollars for a used fire engine, please?
Yeah, we, one of our trucks ended up getting pumped tested first of last month, and it didn't pass the test. And the guys doing the testing said that it either has to be in the pump or the impeller of the pump or the transmission that causes that problem. And they said that for the cost it takes to do that, the truck's a 1986 Pierce, it'd be more expensive to tear into it than what the truck was worth, so.
Okay. Do you have these funds in your equipment fund balance?
Yeah, we got like four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, I think.
Four-ninety-two.
Four-ninety-two.
Okay. Any questions of the Chief of Fire District Number Four on this issue? Do you have any?
Adam there?
Yes.
Adam, could you speak to this purchase a little bit, please?
Morning. Adam Weiser, Emergency Management Director, again. We went out to District Four and met with them, Randy, the County Administrator, and I did approximately a week and a half ago at this point, and we discussed their different engines and their plan moving forward. Currently, with their engine, it didn't pass the pump test. It has several mechanical issues, as well as it doesn't have the safety features of a modern truck. It was decided to try to move forward with purchasing a used engine that's available to get them through right now. Why I say get them through right now is, yes, it's an older truck, but the plan will be in the future is to put together an equipment schedule form for replacement, so they can start replacing all of their apparatus in a timely manner, so we don't get to this point right now. So why I say get to this point is, this isn't the only vehicle they're going to have to replace in the near future. This is just the first out of approximately four vehicles that are for fire apparatus that needs to be replaced. What this will do is, they're telling us it'll get them through the next, I believe, was it five to seven years, Kent? It'll get them through at least the next few years, and it fits in their station. And they want to spend up to one hundred thousand dollars. That hundred thousand dollars will purchase the truck and then outfit that as well. And it would be, they would work in conjunction with the County Administrator and County Counselor Joe Sullivan to work out a viable contract that's in the best interest of the county.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments before we take a vote on this item?
I just, I think you've covered part of that. Excuse me, Commissioner Bush. I think you've covered part of that here with how are you, both personal equipment and rolling equipment, having a one-to-five-to-ten-year program? I think that's imperative that all the districts need to look at with regard to having that plan set up, at least to guide you in spending the money. So I'd encourage everybody to work on that long-range plan and get it done as soon as possible.
Okay, if no other questions, there's a motion and a second, I believe? Is there?
No.
No? Not yet. Okay, is there a motion to approve the request from Fire District Four?
I would move to approve the request from Fire District Four for a used fire engine at the cost not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars for Fire District Number Four.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second to that. Is there any further discussion? Not, please call the roll.
I do have one more thing.
Okay, please do. Please don't call the roll.
Could we also, to get their current engine, their, I believe it's a 1986, to be declared excess when they receive their new engine, so we can get that on Purple Wave as soon as their new one comes in, since they won't have room in the station?
Is that appropriate to your motion, Commissioner Hurst?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Bush, is it appropriate to your second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Chief, for being here.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Our air packs with our spare air bottles, they've reached their time limit. And I did some pricing on, got a quote from one outfit, still waiting on a quote from the other one, but for forty air bottles with used valves that have been rebuilt, the cost to be twenty-five thousand, I think, two-hundred-and-forty-four dollars for the one place to purchase them at. Now, if you go with new valves, you're looking at forty thousand, eight forty-four. But they take the used valves and rebuild them.
Okay, Chief, I might need some clarification from the County Counselor. This request is not on the agenda, and we approved the agenda. I really think, Chief, that we're going to have to come back on this item at a later date. Would that be true, Joe?
I think that's at your discretion. I think you could add it if you wanted to.
Okay.
If there's more time or study, then it would probably be appropriate to defer it.
I would like to see it deferred.
Okay. I think, Chief, we better put it on so that we have some information before the meeting to vote upon.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, business item 8B, is a resolution authorizing for the possible use of some bonds. The County Administrator, would you please handle this?
Yes.
I believe you have someone in the audience to help you.
Yes, Kevin Cowan from Gilmoreville is also here to explain the details.
Yes, uh, Kevin Cowan from Gilmoreville is also here to explain the details of the resolution and the financing of what I, um, miss. So, as you remember, the courthouse improvements, that total an estimate of three-point-five-one-four million dollars. That includes one-point-one million in insurance proceeds. This includes some plaster repair, the dome repair from earthquake damage, and window replacements. And, and then weatherization. So, there's about two-point-three-four-eight million that's not covered by insurance that the county needs to finance. And so the resolution before you today would allow for the, kind of the intent to have a bond, to do bonds for the, that project, and at some point in the near future, you can determine, after we get the bids and work of how much you wanna bond, whether it's the full amount or a different amount. We do have cash to pay for some of this if needed, but, the, I think a couple of months ago, you mentioned bringing some alternatives to you and put it in writing of what could be done, whether it's just to pay cash, to do a geo-bond, or possibly even lease purchase. So what's before you is not the lease purchase, that interest rate is gonna be higher than what a geo-bond would do overall, even though the bonds do have issuance cost. But I think in the long run, it's still better to do a bond than a lease purchase in cash. Not knowing the impact of COVID-nineteen in the twenty-twenty-one year with sales tax, if those do level off or property tax, it may be to the benefit of the county to hold on to as much of the cash balance as possible. But that, again, is up to you at some point in the near future. And then, I didn't know, Kevin, if you wanna explain the resolution that, all right, thank you.
Good morning. So this, this resolution has was referenced as an intent resolution or an authorizing resolution. And we'll do a couple of things for you. One is that it provides an exception from the cash basis law. So if you have bond authorization, you can do, uh, a number of things. You can enter into contracts and make financial commitments, even if you haven't budgeted and appropriated monies to pay for those items. Uh, normally, that would be a cash basis consideration. Do you have the money to pay for the, the item that you're, uh, you're agreeing to? And so bond authorization is an exception to that. And it gives you the opportunity, as was referenced earlier, to then move forward. You can enter into those commitments and, and decide later if you want to use cash or if you wanna use bonds. But in the meantime, you haven't violated the cash basis law, you've, you've got that authorization here. The other thing this does, for federal tax purposes, if you're gonna do a tax-exempt bond, um, there are restrictions on reimbursements. So if, if you proceed with a project and you spend cash, and at some point you decide, well, we wanna issue bonds and reimburse ourselves for the cash, the limitation is that you can go backwards sixty days from the date that you make an official intent declaration that says, we wanna preserve the right to issue bonds and reimburse ourselves. Um, so this would do that. If you acted on this this morning, you could go back sixty days and everything going forward. Um, and there's some exceptions to this as well, but, um, if you spend cash on it, you can, within the next three years, still rely on this and issue bonds and reimburse your cash. So it gives you a lot of flexibility in the coming months and years to spend cash, maybe reimburse cash, uh, change your mind on certain things and, and stay safe from a reimbursement with tax-exempt bonds, uh, perspective, and also from a cash basis law perspective. The other thing I would add, um, and you've probably all read about it, interest rates are really, really low. Um, just, I had occasion to look at, and it was a fairly short-term, um, issue that would be a, a general obligation bond equivalent for a county, um, seven-year issue, and the average interest rate was gonna be less than one percent. So, um, as you move forward in coming months, and I, nobody has a crystal ball, but, uh, it would seem likely that interest rates will remain low, and that may be part of your considerations as, as well if you could lock in a really good borrowing rate.
Thank you. Uh, Randy, we do have quite a bit in our reserve fund for this, uh, operation coming up, do we not?
So the general fund's cash has, um, about seven million dollars in the cash balance. Now, if you use that, you won't have it for the next year's budget process. And so that's where you have to be careful not to use a lot of that. Yes, we have nine hundred thousand in budget authority for courthouse improvements this year, a million next year. That's part of that seven million dollars. So, just, so yes, we have the cash to pay for some of this over the next couple of years. But that does take away from the cash balance of the general fund, which, when we do the budget and the, um, budget worksheet, it does, um, I guess, adjust what the expected mill levy will be to pay, so just keep that in mind. But we do have, we do have nothing to pay for.
When would be your, uh, your thoughts of if we go ahead and, uh, act on this request to, uh, authorize this, uh, as in the packet today? When would we really decide how much we're gonna bond? I'm, I'm confused about, we, we know how much is, we've got in reserves, but.
The bid opening is later this week, um, for this project. At that point, we'll know the total cost. The intent for the resolution for today is to get it published for three publications in the newspaper. And then I believe thirty, uh, protest period, thirty days following that last publication, assuming the five percent of the voters do not petition against this, that then gives the county the right to issue bonds, bond after that point. So, what today is really just the intent, if you wanna make, you, by approving this, does not say you are gonna issue bonds for this project. Well, we know the numbers. If, uh, a future meeting, after looking at the contracts, the commission wants to use the cash that we do have on hand for this year's budget authority and next year's budget authority, that can be addressed. The issuing of the bonds, once construction starts, and I'll probably ask Kevin maybe on this, but we can pay as we go for a while and then reimburse ourselves when the bonds are issued. Other bonds coming up are for the landfill project, and then the bonds for the two bridges that have temp notes right now. It has been discussed whether, depending on timing in twenty-twenty-one, if all three can be lumped together so that the issuance cost, the cost of the bond can be one time and do a large bond for all three projects. The courthouse improvements, I'm not sure this one, if this one's gonna be too quick. It's ahead of the other ones on when the money's needed. Depends, I guess, when the contractor gets in and starts to work on this and get, will be completed.
And, and we might know that more even after the bids are received here in the next couple of weeks on time?
We'll know the dollar amount and probably a, a timeline, but it'll depend on the weather also.
The fact that we could get reimbursed, what concerns me is five-point-five million, sounds like a lot of money. But when you look at our total budget, I'm not sure it's even quite adequate should we have a, a real bad emergency. That's what I'm looking at, is I like to see a percent of the total budget. Uh, you know, if we look at the seven million, we're, what, a sixty-four million budget? You know, we're not, we're not, uh, in excess in, in, in my opinion, of our reserve. I, I don't see that as, and if we look at, uh, if you do, like Kevin suggested, or not even suggested, but just brought up, of a, uh, we, at a seven years on a three-and-a-half million-dollar project, we're looking at payments of about a half a million, five-hundred thousand plus interest each year. So we would have about three years, but what happens in year four through seven with regard to, uh, adding that to our, uh, budget as repaying bonded? That, that would be something I would, I would look at here.
And, and one of the options when we talk, when we get to the bond part is, in talking with Greg, our financial advisor, the bond advisor, we could do a wraparound bond. So the Public Building Commission, large payment for, I think, the Public Works facility, the last large payment is in twenty-twenty-one. Twenty-twenty-two has a small payment. We could then adjust so that the budget for the capital improvements would remain somewhat steady, but we won't be paying a large portion until twenty-twenty-two. So there are options with that so that our budget works.
All right.
We also would probably, um, assume that there's, with some bonds, a certain date, we may be able to pay off early with cash if our cash balance is in good shape. Just going back to the cash balance, that six million is only the general fund, so it's not the entire county budget. So it is a little bit better, a higher percentage of the general fund, but a lot of the other funds don't have as much of a cash balance in their fund as what the general fund does.
Okay, so, uh, continuing on with what you just said, uh, I'm assuming the Public Works Building Bond is significantly higher than we can, uh, have to pay at current rates for a bond. Would, would it make any sense to investigate using some of these cash funds to pay that off early?
I would have to look at.
Well, I, I, I don't know that we need an immediate question, but seems like to me if it's substantially higher, we're better off creating a new bond at a lower interest rate and paying the old one off with some of our cash funds. I, I need, I need some expertise on that.
Could look at that, but I'm not, is, there's really only, other than twenty-twenty, there's only one more large principal payment, so. But we could, I could look at that.
Yeah, okay, please do.
I've brought this up before, but I'm highly disappointed in the cost of a couple or three of these architectural fees. When I look at some that are thirteen percent, twenty-three percent, and eight percent, I understand, six percent, I understand. But I'm just highly disappointed in the, in the, in, in a couple of them, and one of them happens to be, uh, uh, exterior that's a, through the insurance company. But, uh, I guess that's nothing we can do, but I'm just highly disappointed in those, in the rates of those, uh, some of the, some of them, only a couple of them.
Well, but we've really, we've already approved those things.
I know, I know.
You're just getting back to being disappointed.
Okay, disappointed.
I was disappointed when we approved it. Uh, they do seem a little higher than usual, but I think at the point in time we approved them, the architect tried to justify the amount of work in this project of, am I not correct? Uh, each window had to be analyzed and.
With a historical building, there's a lot more work than involved.
That's only six percent for the window restoration.
Okay, is there a motion to re, approve Resolution twenty-twenty-dish?
Thirty.
Dish thirty? Anybody?
Mr. Bush, you wanna do that? Okay, if not, I will, uh, approve, uh, motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-dish thirty, authorizing and providing for constructing, installing, furnishing, and equipping a courthouse improvements, and providing for the payment of costs thereby, uh, to Randy, Partington County Administrator and Kevin Cohen, Gilmoreville Bond Counselor.
I will second that. Mr. O'Sullivan, is Mr. Bush not with us any longer?
Mr. Bush, are you there?
Okay.
I hear the, uh, I hear the.
Buzz.
The, the music like, uh, when somebody's on hold, so.
Uh, please, there's a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that has been approved, we'll move on to county administrator reports. Uh, Mr. Partington, what do you have for us today? And thank you, Kevin, for being here and working with us on this project.
Today, I, I don't have as many items to mention. Yesterday, there was a, or you guys received a letter from Reno Harvey County Fire District Two about reports to the insurance, the Kansas Insurance Commission. I emailed that to the fire chief, and that has been sent in, that will be sent in yesterday. So that issue has been taken care of.
So we can ignore that letter?
Yes, it's been addressed. And then, just kind of letting you know, the nonprofit grant for the CARES Act, um, a little over a million dollars, we're gonna have our first meeting this Wednesday to start looking at the applications that have come in. Now, it's not that, the deadline hasn't passed, but we're gonna start meeting to look at how the applications look and, um, what may be missing, what, if we have more questions for those applicants. And right now, just preliminary numbers from what John and Gary have sent me, there's gonna be more than a million dollars worth of requests. So we'll, we'll take some paring back of, a lot of it right now looks like it's gonna be a revenue loss for the nonprofits, so.
Update me here on, I looked at the Community Foundation website, and I could not find that application. Am I, do you know where I should be looking there?
I'll send you the link, it should be out there, and I think there's also a link on the county's website. So we should have one on the Reno County website, it should be there. I will double-check to make sure that it's visible to where people don't have trouble finding it.
I sometimes have trouble finding things on the county website.
Just patience, my friend, patience.
Okay, send me, send me that link.
I, I will. And then, then the other thing, just to let you know that, um, I will be attending today the Economic Development Advisory Council Meeting with the HUTS Chamber. The EDAC meeting is today, that Commissioner Bush and I both received, uh, um, invitation. Obviously, Bob, Commissioner Bush won't be there, won't be able to be there, but I will attend and let you know if there's anything, any feedback or anything you guys need to know. Those were the only items I had.
Okay, Commissioner Hurst, do you have items this morning?
Yeah, I, I, I do, I was, uh, I guess I continue to be, question the capabilities, the interest in our, uh, from the early on with regard to our consultants with planning and zoning. Uh, I, I think probably he didn't, uh, either, I just was disappointed in the fact that, uh, didn't seem to digest the importance of, of, uh, the early, uh, recommendations. I, uh, the other thing was, I, uh, don't know why we have to necessarily follow old traditions or old ways. And I don't see any reason why we cannot start to work on a development contract for wind power. Uh, it seems to me like a company that's spending millions and millions of dollars would like to know early on where they, uh, where the basis, uh, of a, uh, development contract would be. That way it takes it out of, uh, we, we get started on this so we, we can cover some areas and not be pushed real hard and real quick and real fast to come up with a development contract. That is, to me, it should be in, in our county's best interest to start looking at a development contract, uh, for future. Uh, it's always been done the other way, but I do not know why we can't start developing, uh, the basis for a development contract now so that we have considerable time to, uh, to develop this contract that's in the best interest of the county. of the county. I just, I think we need to look out after our taxpayers' money, and this would be a good way to get started on this early, so that we have enough information and can relay that information into at least the basis for a development contract. Because basically, people are the lifeblood of our county, and local businesses are the lifeblood of the county and our people. And I think it's just a good time to take a look at why we cannot start on a development contract now.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, just maybe as an explanation to the public, if I understand correctly, and Commissioner Hurst, correct me if I don't say this appropriately, for a wind energy developer to proceed in Reno County, they have to do two things. One, they have to meet the requirements of the, of the planning document, which the Planning Commission is currently working on.
Yes, sir.
And they have not approved a new document, but they're working on that at this point in time. And then, second thing before they could start is they have to accept a development agreement that the county presents to that wind developer. And what you're suggesting here today, that, which I think I concur with, is that not knowing if we will have a acceptable wind energy presentation in the near future, I, I think your thoughts are correct that we should direct staff, our legal counsel, to look at some of the development agreements of other counties that have used in the past. To me, this is not rocket science for develop something new.
I don't think so.
You take a look at four or five agreements from other places, wouldn't you?
I would, and then we can adapt those to the county.
And then we can talk about the pros and the cons. And I, I think your, your suggestion is, is very valid.
I appreciate that.
Do you have any problem, Randy, with us instructing council to look at development agreements from several existing wind projects that are in the state of Kansas, and comparing them, and trying to come up with something to present so that we can have four or five months here maybe to, to look at such item? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
So, for clarification, separate from the wind energy regulations, excuse me, you're talking about an actual development agreement similar to what Reno County did with Nextera last year or two years ago?
We never had put together a development agreement...
Oh, you never had one, okay.
...because we never accepted their application...
Okay.
...for development. And I think what Commissioner Hurst is suggesting makes good sense that seems like we're always in a hurry to do something, and it would appear that in the next two or three months that the Planning Commission would have some kind of document for us to approve or not approve or send back to them. And this development agreement ties in, to me, with that on what the benefits to the county are and what the promises by a developer are. So, I, I, I would encourage us to try to do that here in the next month or two.
So, development contract, if I could add, excuse me, Randy, I didn't mean...
No, go ahead.
A development contract would include things like decommissioning. It would include things like roads used, bridges, cost, penalties for not using those roads. And it kind of stems back from some of the conversation I had at the last Kansas Association of County meeting with other counties that have had wind power and what their experiences were. And, you know, it's also, would include a pilot, payment lieu taxes. It would include the how long and the conditions of either escrowing money for decommissioning and/or a security bond for the decommissionings. It would include lots of, those are just a few of the items that it would include, okay?
Yeah, I guess the concern or question, usually with a development agreement, we would already know where a wind farm would be located, and then that'd be more specific to that area following the regulations that are already in place. Or, so, would you want this development agreement to like look at samples or example of ones, and then take that back to the Planning Commission to help them go backward and set up the regulations? Or...
I think there's two separate, complete separate agreements, okay? One is the regulations like Commissioner Sellers mentioned. That's the Planning Commission to come make those recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. And then, there is a separate agreement, the development contract, which covers the, some of the things that I mentioned. And so, yes, it's, I'm just looking at a basis, not necessarily actual location.
So, we could have like, so like a template...
Template.
...for a development agreement, but with no specific, not the specifics...
Right.
...because we don't have an application on, on the table...
Right.
...or a company to work with on that.
Just in case we ever do.
It, it could even, in my opinion, have a bunch of blank lines in it that are filled in at a later date.
Yes.
But I think Commissioner Hurst has a very good point, that assuming that we'll have another wind application at some point in time for some part of the county, that we should allow council the time it takes to do this well. And I, I don't think it's starting from scratch. It's going out and looking at Pratt, and Kingman, and Ellsworth, and Ford, and, and wherever else.
Lyon.
Lyon County?
Lyon and, and the county just north of Lyon, and some others.
That, I think you could take four or five of those and look at the best parts of all of them. One of the things that, that I think, and I'm in complete agreement with Commissioner Hurst here, is that I, I don't think our planning document should include this, but that anybody in a district that's gonna get wind energy is interested in how concerns are addressed, and, and...
Yes.
...whether it's excess noise or excess something else, I think it's appropriate to advise and have in concrete terms how, give me something, it's...
Mitigation, process.
Mitigation, yeah, process of...
With time.
...of going through problems that might occur with a wind energy development. I think that's a very valid concern of, of people that live in an area. Okay. Joe, we just assigned you a new task.
[laughing]
Okay, other things, Commissioner Hurst?
Uh, no.
I don't believe I have anything. And Randy, you've already made all of your comments?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Are we off here?
Yes, I.